Good evening. This is the regular joint meeting of the Oakley City Council. Oakley City Council acting as the successor agency to the Oakley Redevelopment Agency, Oakley Public Financing Authority. This meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call. Councilmember Fuller?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Here.
And I am Mayor Shaw, I am present. The pledge allegiance today is going to be led by Jamison White. If you could meet me up here. Jamison is a ten-year-old proud student at Laurel Elementary School. One of his greatest accomplishments was when he participated in a mentorship program where he helped first graders in reading with their words and numbers. He spoke last year at a school board meeting sharing how the experience gave him a deeper appreciation for teachers. The teacher that made the biggest impact on him was his fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Frey. She taught him to be kind to others and treat people the way you want to be treated. He has earned multiple academic awards as well as recognition in football and wrestling. He enjoys sports, math, spending time with his family, and occasionally playing video games. His goals are to be a great person and a strong leader. When he grows up, he hopes to work as a welder with local 342 just like his dad. At home, he lives with his mom, dad, little sister, and two dogs. One of his favorite saying is "Life is short, so do what makes you happy." As he enters in his last year at Laurel, he says it has been one of the best experiences of his life and so far because it's a place where you can make lifelong friends and form special bonds with your teachers. His one piece of advice for students is to make sure you practice your times tables.
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to move on to item 1.3, which is the Contra Costa Water District Update. Director Constance Holdaway and Oliver Simons?
Right, excuse me. Okay, there we go. Good evening. Thank you for having me to provide you with this update from Contra Costa Water District. Like you said, I am Constance Holdaway. I'm Director for Division Five. I represent the wonderful residents of Oakley, part of Antioch, part of Brentwood, and then the Los Peceros Reservoir watershed. Contra Costa Water District is a special district. Special districts are governed by local residents to provide essential services. At CCWD, our primary function is to provide water for consumption, irrigation, business, and fire suppression. While we work closely and coordinate with stormwater and wastewater utilities, other agencies are responsible for these services in our area. Special districts are not governed by cities or counties. We cover numerous cities, yet not the entire county. CCWD is governed by a five-member Board of Directors, each of whom lives in the area they represent and is elected by the voters to four-year terms. Contra Costa Water District is wholly dependent on the delta for its water. We are able to divert water from four locations, and hopefully, the map's kind of small, but hopefully you can see some of these. Mallard Slough near Pittsburgh, Rock Slough on the east side of Oakley, Old River near Discovery Bay, and Middle River on Victoria Island. High-quality water in the delta is seasonal and fluctuates depending on snowpack and rainfall received each year. When the delta water quality is at its best, we store as much as possible in the Los Peceros Reservoir for use when delta quality begins to decline. The more than eighty-year-old Contra Costa Canal, shown as the thick blue line on the map, is the backbone of our water system. It delivers water from the delta and Los Peceros to our treatment plants, municipal partners, and industrial customers. And I'll talk a little bit more about the canal shortly. We supply water via the canal to more than 520,000 people throughout central and eastern Contra Costa County. We're a wholesaler and a retailer. Approximately half of the people we serve get treated water directly from us. They live or work in the large light-green area of the map. The remaining half gets water from one of our municipal system partners. Oakley residents receive treated water from Diablo Water District. Diablo Water District and CCWD jointly own the Randa Bold Water Treatment Plant that is here in Oakley and is operated by CCWD. Treated water from Randa Bold is distributed to customers in Oakley by Diablo Water District. So just a little update on water supply for right now. Our water year runs October 1st through September 30th. So this past winter, a series of storms hit California and significantly replenished our water supply. Overall, precipitation is now above average for the year at 106% of the historical average as of September 5th. As you can see on the map, our statewide supply for Lake Shasta, it is currently 62% full, sitting at 104% of its annual average. And locally, Los Peceros is 92% full. Storage with the Los Peceros reservoir is a great benefit to CCWD customers because, as I mentioned earlier, delta water quality is seasonal. When delta water is at its freshest, we store as much water as possible in the reservoir to use when it starts to degrade. Los Peceros is an off-stream reservoir filled by pumping from the delta rather than upstream river flows. CCWD is committed to strategic investments in our water system, and this slide shows a few of our long-term infrastructure projects happening around Oakley. We are regularly evaluating and improving our systems and equipment so that we can meet service demands, and we are constantly working to ensure the safety of our system and our facilities. We're currently in the midst of a project to improve worker safety at a few of our facilities along the canal, including our flow control station and pumping plants in Oakley. These facilities help ensure that we can keep water moving through the canal and into the rest of the service area. We're also currently making significant upgrades at the Randa Bold Water Treatment Plant. CCWD opened the plant in Oakley in 1982, 1992, and upgraded in 2007. As previously mentioned, CCWD jointly owns and operates the treatment plant with Diablo Water District. We've recently completed projects to improve chemical storage, replace outdated pumps, improve HVAC systems, and upgrade our server room and IT networks at Randa Bold. Right now, we're also in the midst of a major project to enhance safety at Randa Bold, which is the planned chemical conversion to eliminate the use of chlorine gas and aqueous ammonia in favor of much safer alternatives, among some other improvements. We're converting the use of chlorine gas to sodium hypochlorite, which has become the industry standard, and we're converting from the use of aqueous ammonia to liquid ammonium sulfate, which is considered a more stable form of ammonia. So this is critical safety for the workers and for the community as a whole. So now I want to talk a little bit about the canal system. Like I said previously, the Contra Costa Canal is the backbone of our water system. The canal was built in the 1930s and 40s and continues to deliver nearly every drop that will be used in our service area. We look at the canal in two sections. The main canal, which is shown in dark blue on the map, runs from Oakley to Clyde, and the loop canal showed in light blue continues south from Clyde through Concord, North Walnut Creek, and Pleasant Hill before terminating in Martinez. The yellow line on the right side of the map is part of the main canal known as the Rock Slough segment, which I'll talk a little bit more on the next slide. Now, the main canal is aging, and it's posing multiple challenges for us. One is life safety. The canal poses a hazard to those who cross its fences, and there is an average of one death per year due to the canal. Water quality, the open canal is vulnerable to water quality degradation, including algae blooms, stormwater runoff, as well as accidental or intentional contamination events. Water supply, earthquakes and landslides pose a risk to the canal caused by storms, like we've had the past two winters. The open channel also loses water to evaporation and seepage through cracks. And lastly, maintenance. Costs to maintain the canal continue to increase as it continues to age. Most of these challenges occur along the main canal, which delivers more than 99% of the water we treat and serve, which is that dark blue line. We're now advancing a strategy to replace the dark blue section of the canal with a buried pipeline to ensure safe, reliable water delivery for the next 100 years. This will be a significant investment for CCWD, but delaying action would escalate maintenance costs, increase the risk of emergency failures, and burden future generations with unplanned repairs, while leaving public safety hazards, vulnerability to extreme weather, sediment buildup, and water quality impacts unaddressed. We anticipate construction won't begin until fiscal year 2032, and we'll be providing updates every step of the way. Over the next year, we'll be continuing advancing design of the facility, beginning the environmental review process. Future presentations will be provided to the city council so that you will be updated on these efforts. To address challenges at the beginning of the canal system, CCWD is replacing the final stretch of the open online canal near the intake on Rock Slough. We're partnering with the city on the remaining segment, which replaces the open canal and accommodates widening the East Cypress Road. And I do want to express CCWD's appreciation for the City of Oakley staff and for the city council for the collaboration throughout this whole process, and we really look forward to further coordination and wrapping this up. Since 2009, approximately 14,000 feet of the online canal has been replaced with a 10-foot diameter buried pipeline. A buried pipeline will improve drinking water quality and climate resiliency and enhance public safety and security, as well as minimize water losses due to evaporation. We've completed installation of approximately 6,400 feet of open canal near East Cypress Road, and we are, like I said, collaborating with the city to complete that final segment. Serving today, planning for tomorrow, is the title of an outreach campaign we have run this spring to highlight CCWD's history on reliable water delivery through Contra Costa Canal and our proactive planning to address emerging challenges, including the future piping of the main canal from Antioch to Clyde. You can visit the website listed on this slide to watch the two-minute video that showcases how CCWD works to ensure the canal can support our community both today and for generations to come. And the key to future sustainability is planning, anticipating potential climate change impacts, and preparing for future drought conditions should they occur. We complete an urban water management plan to forecast future water demands and to evaluate alternative water supplies as part of our water portfolio, and we also participate in the East Contra Costa County Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, which is a mouthful, and the Bay Area Regional Reliability Project. These plans help us ensure there is adequate water to meet customers' needs now and again in the future. Part of the Bay Area Regional Reliability Project, excuse me, is creating interties with other water providers to exchange water when needed. The East Bay mud untreated water intertie with our Los Peceros Pipeline, as pictured on the slide, is one such example, and this has been used in the past during times when we have been able to draw water directly from Los Peceros. Water recycling is a component of CCWD's long-term sustainability water strategy and will continue to play a role in our supply portfolio. Approximately 10% of current water needs in our service area are met through recycled water projects in coordination with wastewater agencies like Ironhouse, who I understand is celebrating their 80th anniversary, so congratulations to them. When the community reuse project is completed on the former Naval Weapons Station in Concord, the amount of recycled water use in our service area could actually double. We're looking at other applications for recycled water as well, including irrigation and industrial uses, and we're continuing to explore expanded partnership with our local wastewater agencies. And this slide just shows a few ways CCWD works to help our customers use their water in smart, efficient ways, which helps preserve our long-term water supply. Our water supply efficiency team offers a wealth of rebates and resources to assist commercial and residential customers. We also have mulch coupons, car wash coupons, and free fixtures available, and details are on the website listed on the slide, or you can also call the water district directly for more information. And that concludes my presentation. I really do appreciate your time in letting me present to you an update.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much.
You have a great night.
All right, item 1.4 is Contra Costa Animal Services Update. Director Ben Winkleback.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, residents. Ben Winkleback, Director of Contra Costa Animal Services. We provide animal services for all the cities in Contra Costa County except for Antioch, including Oakley. A little bit of who we are. Not everyone understands what Animal Services does. You see trucks driving around that are branded with our insignia, and we, you know, handle bites, but there's a lot more to Animal Services. Field Services, that's who's driving around the truck. They investigate bites. They are agents of the Health Department for rabies control. They enforce animal laws. They investigate cruelty, and they rescue animals. We have shelter operations. These are folks that worked in the shelter that provide husbandry for the animals in our care. We receive about 7,000 animals a year. There's a lot to do to make them happy and healthy. This also includes the medical staff. We have several veterinarians and staff that provide for the medical needs of the animals when they come in. Many of them are injured or sick, sadly, but we also have to span neuter them by law before they can be adopted out, or if you're trying to redeem an animal. We also perform trap neuter and return services. There are feral cats, and there's no mandate to impound them, and if they're healthy, they shouldn't be impounded anyway. The field has trended away from that, but the ethical thing to do is provide for their care and to create a healthy population of them. That's called trap neuter return. We actually do quite a bit of work out here with this, and we've increased our footprint in the TNR field. We've added about 60 additional slots a week to help address that need. Administration, these are the folks that answer the phones when you call. They are at the front counter when you come to the shelter. They process your adoptions. They help you find your missing pet. It also includes, they pay the bills. They keep the lights on. And then Community Services, we have hundreds of active volunteers that come to the shelter every week. The staff can provide a basic level of care for the animals. We can provide them with a safe place that is clean, healthy. We can feed them and address their needs. The volunteers enrich their lives. The volunteers are the people that you meet if you come to adopt an animal. They will probably assist you when you come to the shelter to locate an animal, and they also participate in all of our community events. So what do we do for Oakley? This is a breakdown of, first, the pie chart. This is what we're doing, Field Services. Thirty-six percent of our activities here are stray animals. Most of these are going to be dogs. Investigations, not all of that is cruelty or neglect investigations. A lot of this is bite investigations. Rabies is a zoonotic disease. We go to great lengths. A lot of energy goes into the control of rabies. If someone is bitten, we show up, we investigate, we find out who the animal is, quarantine that animal. We will talk to the animal owner. Some of these animals are deemed potentially dangerous or dangerous. I can show you how many. There's 12 in your city limits. We investigate that, and then we enforce the conditions. This is a public safety issue. We want to make sure if you have a dog that bites or will bite, that it's housed in a way where it can't bite. We pick up a lot of deceased animals. Twenty-one percent of our field activity is picking up deceased animals. That's over 200 animals in the city limits of Oakley last year. Assist. What assist means, this is if local law enforcement needs a help. If someone's being arrested, they have an animal in their care, someone needs to provide for that, so we will come and pick it up. This also happens if someone has a medical emergency. Someone needs to care for that animal. Other is just about everything else. We get a lot of phone calls, a lot of help, just troubleshooting a situation. There's our neighborhood disputes that we get pulled into, and we try to provide guidance. You know, we want resolution to that as well. We're, I'm new. I've been there for about a year and a few months, and, you know, I'm taking a deep dive into all the different divisions that we have, and we're growing, we're changing. Field Services, what's going to impact you? We're hiring more. We've been hiring more. We're trying to fill vacancies. They are law enforcement officers. They do carry guns. There is an extensive background check, so hiring is, takes a long time to find the right person and to make sure that they are the right person. We recently transitioned from Contra Costa Sheriff's Office doing our dispatch to San Ramon Valley Fire. Dispatch seems to be a job where everybody has trouble hiring candidates for that, and due to resources, the sheriff's office wasn't able to continue to provide for us, but San Ramon Valley Fire currently does. We've completed all the linking of our systems. We use CAD, which is a computer-aided dispatch, and we have that in the vehicle, and it takes a while to have our two systems talk. That's been completed. We're also finding, you know, we're getting analytics out of them, which is really beneficial for us to be strategic in our decisions. Shelter Services, the number of animals coming in is going up. It's been going up. COVID, it went down dramatically across the, at all animal services statewide. Since about 2003, we're seeing that inch up every year. That's due to the population growing in the county. It's due to people losing housing and needing to relinquish their pet. That adds to overcrowding at the shelter. We only have so much real estate. We have to put a lot of energy into planning for these animals to make sure that we put them on a pathway to adoption, to a transfer partner, to, back to its owner. And I'll talk about some of those tools here in a minute. And increasing cost for supplies and staff. The cost of everything's going up. We use a lot of medical supplies. We have a very large veterinary hospital in the shelter, and COVID drove the cost for everything up dramatically. It caught everybody in the veterinary field kind of off-guard because it went up about 60% one year and continued to go up after that. That's a challenge that we wrestle with. So we are getting creative. We, you know, we've brought in new staff to help us make sure that we are, you know, maintaining industry standards while being good stewards of the money that we have. Community Services, there is just an increased need for support for the members of the community. We'll talk in a minute of how much. We've more than doubled our efforts in the last year providing services to the community, and we hope that it's going to pay off. It's addressing a need. And then I couldn't help but include a picture of a zebra in a swimming pool. This wasn't in Oakley, but I couldn't help myself anyway. This actually was in Contra Costa County. The zebra had been in there for a few days, and it was quite an ordeal to get out. Never thought I'd see that in this field. Field Services, this is an area that we're focusing on right now. Again, we're trying to hire new officers. We have one that's in an academy right now. He'll be on the street soon. We have two that are in the background process. We've integrated our CAD and Chameleon. This is for dispatch. We are hosting, I think it's next Friday, search warrant training. This is for our officers. They are law enforcement. We just served a warrant a couple weeks ago. But these are skills that you need to constantly train on. We've recently hosted Penal Code 597.1. This gives us the authority to seize an animal. This is our bread and butter. We recently hosted a forensic veterinarian. Just like you see on TV, just like, you know, regular law enforcement do, we, there are forensic veterinarians out there. Sadly, we have to engage them. We aren't engaging them when everything is going all right. But the, again, the field is moving. The field is evolving. There's technology out there that we are unaware of, so we train on this. We use GIS. We have, it's a graphical representation of the entire county, of the entire service area. We have sergeants that watch that all the time to make sure that we are actually being efficient in delivering these services. If you just handle calls in the order in which they came in, you're going to do a lot of driving. We want to make sure that they're driving appropriately, so we hit the, you know, priority one calls in as efficient a manner as possible. We've also created a desk officer position. Believe it or not, a lot of the needs of Field Services doesn't need a Field Service Officer to respond. A lot of this is handled over the phone. What this does is this allows those that are in the field to respond in a timely manner, and it allows us to be efficient. The watch commander, they're actually staff from the field five days a week, and that, you know, they are supervising the field staff, but this allows them to respond for support. It's, again, we're just looking at efficiency. We want to get our response times down. We want to be able to hit every call that comes in. Medical Services, this is something that, this was feedback that I received when I first started, that we really wanted to increase the services that were provided in the community. And again, this is a very large expense for us. We have a new veterinarian that is our DEA and premises permit holder, and she is bringing in best practices. We have dramatically increased our surgery output. We've increased our programs. We've also, you know, in response to the community's needs, Measure X, it was a bond measure, and some of that went to animals. Based off of opinion of the public or understanding of need, Measure X is going to fund 2,700 surgeries in the next three years, two years now. And the Animal Benefit Fund, which is a restricted fund that we have that is donations, that's funding 500 surgeries. Well, just got done funding 500 surgeries, and we're in the bid process to pay for more surgeries next year. And this goes out to community-based organizations. They perform the surgeries. They are out there in the community. It's a very large county. We've added an additional RVT. RVT is the veterinary equivalent to a registered nurse. They have a professional license. They have increased training. We have them staffing now on the weekends because we have to, by law and by moral obligation, is provide for the medical needs of these animals. And then if an animal comes in, we were having to house it at the emergency veterinary hospital at great cost. We added skilled staff on the weekends, so now we can bring them to the shelter, provide for them. This is just an efficiency that we identified and were able to address. And we did build a kitten nursery, which sounds cute, but it's in response to a need that we were able to identify. Currently, we have just under 300 kittens in foster care. These are kittens that can't eat on their own. These are kittens that are five days old. We also need a place for them in the facility. They do best in a foster home, but we don't have foster homes lined up all the time. So we have a nursery where we have volunteers that come in and bottle-feed these kittens and provide for them. There's incubators in there that keep them at the right temperature and humidity. It's more sophisticated than a kitten nursery sounds. How we handle animals is really important. We have, again, an increasing number of animals coming to our shelter, and we only have so much shelter. We want to make sure that we do the best job of taking care of them while they're in our care as possible. This means addressing their stress. The shelter's a very stressful place. This is a very foreign concept for a lot of the animals that come in. They may have never been in a place where they're housed in a ward with 12 more dogs or 20 cats. So we had Veterinary Behaviors come out last year. She made 12 recommendations. So far, 11 of those have been addressed. The 12th is training, and by the end of the calendar year, we should be done with training. But we also looked at our physical plan. But we also looked at our physical plant and how are we, you know, what barriers to success do we have that we're in there? It's a, it's a very stressful place. We've taken on projects such as sound deadening. We walk around with decibel meters and measure the sound in, in the animals' wards. And we've applied, I mean, some of its automotive product to the back of cages. We apply similar to the egg crate foam that you would hang on a wall, but we've able to reduce the ambient noise in the wards by four or five decibels, which may not sound like much to, you know, the average civilian, but stress drives disease in animals. And we've, I mean, I can't say that we've eliminated upper respiratory infection in cats, but just a different approach to how we house and care for them. Anecdotally, it's almost gone. And that's something that we used to chase a long time, at great expense and at great cost. I mean, a great, you know, resource toll because we were constantly dealing with sick animals. When we addressed their housing and that's improved. We also do pathway planning. And this is all the stakeholders in the shelter that can create an outcome for an animal, be it adoption, transfer to a five oh one C three group, return it to their owners. And they talk about animals with challenges. And what we've been able to do is reduce the average length of stay to fourteen days from over twenty, when I started. And when you're talking about seven thousand animals a year, if you can reduce that number of days that you're providing care for them. One, it gets them into a home faster. And we haven't changed the, the decisions that we make. We've just changed how we make them. We make them in a timely manner. This started off as a two-time-a-week meeting. We found out it was so beneficial that we've actually increased it to four times. We looked at the, the operations. We had the database vendor. One database runs about everything that we do as far as animal welfare goes. We had them come on site and do an evaluation. And they, they left us with a fourteen-page, pages worth of recommendations that were, were changing because there's automation that we were not taking care of or taking advantage of. These opportunities, this will continue to, to address the, the length of stay. If we can decrease our length of stay more, it helps us stay afloat with that increasing number of animals coming in to the facility. When we talk about outcomes, animals can be adopted, they can be returned to their owner, they can go to a rescue group, they can be euthanized. The fastest way out is when they return home. The second fastest way out is if they go to a rescue partner. Adoption is by far the slowest way out of the facility. So we've really worked with the five oh one C three organizations. And we've had an eighteen percent increase in transfers in the last year. That's also helping with that, that fourteen-day length of stay. We partner with Contra Costa Humane Society for, for cat fosters and adoptions. They are, they have hundreds of our cats in their care. They'll, they'll probably adopt about eight hundred this year. The Return to Owner Campaign, we call it RTO. Again, when we look at, at way, pathways out of the facility, going back home is the fastest pathway. It also feels the best when you can reunite a family. When we looked at our stats, we identified that as a gap and we tried to understand why. We guessed it's, people don't know about us. We started using targeted social media ads. And immediately, the first month, we saw about a thirty percent increase in, in return to owner. And that has continued. That also is helping keep the animals back, you know, out of our space and back with their families. And an interesting thing that is not in here is we had a compromised credit card that we used to pay for these ads for a month. That thirty percent increase that we're seeing month over month was gone. You know, we, we can say that this works because we tested it in a way that, you know, was not on purpose. But when we saw, why, why did the RTO campaign fail last month? And it was because we couldn't pay to run the ads. And this is just getting the word out. It's not talking about specific animals. It's describing what we're doing and it's had great engagement and, and really tangible results. The community outreach, these are vaccine clinics. These are wellness clinics that, that we're hosting. Last year, we did eighteen hundred pets. This is microchip events, vaccine events, basic wellness. This is what the community is really calling for right now. Fleet prevention, hundreds of people show up at these every single time. The next one is going to be in Brentwood and it's in the middle of October. We can't do a lot in East County in July and August because it's quite hot. So we're baking on October. So if anybody wants to go, please come to our website and, and figure out where it's going to be. We did ninety-three off-site events in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. These are microchip clinics, vaccine clinics, off-site adoption, humane education. We try to target areas with, with high intake. We want to be very strategic with our actions. We look at heat maps of where the animal's coming from and where are the needs. Animal services is a game of, of gap identification. We, we collaborate with the cities. Sometimes they request it, sometimes we, we request a space from them because we've identified a need. And again, Measure X, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for animal welfare. And this is pet retention programs. These are folks that are losing their home or they're unable to provide medical care for their pet who would otherwise be a loving family and an ideal home. Measure X helps give them the support that they need. The vaccine clinics, these are the most recent. We did Hercules, Pittsburgh, Bethel Island, San Ramon, and we've done two in Martinez. Again, these, I think four hundred people show up to these on average. This is what our reality looks like. Animal intake is the, the top left chart there. Again, it's going up. It looks small, but that's an increase of hundreds of animals that are coming in. And if we only have space for a hundred and twelve dogs in our facility, an increase of, of a few hundred animals coming in is, is problematic. So that's why we're taking all these steps so we can address that by moving them through our system faster. We have seen a small dip in adoptions. Again, I've talked about being, gap identification is one of the most important things. We've taken some steps to this. We've actually onboarded new clerical staff so we can be open seven days a week. We're currently closed on Sundays and Mondays and I think that's an opportunity that we're missing out on. We're addressing that right now. The rescue partners, these are five oh one C three groups or community-based organizations. Said the engagement was up eighteen percent. You can see that in the, the bottom-left graph. And then euthanasia. Euthanasia has remained about static even though the number of animals that are, are coming in has gone up. Euthanasia is driven by animals that are sick, that are injured. We cannot create a happy, healthy life for them. Or animals that are, that have behavioral challenges where, where we have legitimate public safety concerns. Those decisions are made at these pathway meetings and these are all the stakeholders. There's medical staff there, field staff there, husbandry staff. They discuss the, the individual animal's needs and make those decisions. Field services, these are the potentially dangerous and dangerous animals. These are the permits by city. There's currently a hundred and thirteen in the county right now. Twelve of them are right here in Oakley. If an animal bites somebody, it's typically a dog. If it falls under a certain criteria, left the property to the owner. A lot of these are owner issues, these are management gone wrong. We come out and we enforce, we inspect properties to make sure that it can't happen again. Wildlife, we don't really do much with wildlife. This is California Department of Fish and Wildlife and they have a mostly hands-off approach. We'll call, we'll respond if they're deceased or if they've bitten somebody. There is a rabies concern with wildlife. That's why we take it very seriously. But almost everything else, we, we refer to Department of Fish and Wildlife. We've included some links here because there are a lot of questions. The, the state has some recommendations for coexisting with wildlife. And actually, they're, they're very helpful guides. So if anybody wants to, or has questions about that, I would refer that. This is on our website as well, so you don't have to capture it from the presentation. Again, what we're working on right now, we're improving the, the care of the animals. We're really focusing on their space. Some of it's been working on Sundays because we're closed and, and we can, we can apply the sound deadening. We're going room by room with this. We're, we're trying to further engage with transfer partners. They really make this system work. The fear-free animal handling, that's the one recommendation from the Veterinary Behaviors that we've not yet completed because it's hours and hours of training and the staff is going through that. Our target is by the end of the calendar year and then we're on target for that. Pathway planning, that's what makes it work. This is how we've dropped our average length of stay. We're going to continue to refine that. We, we sit in on this, we have third parties sit in on this and, and make recommendations. We pay attention because we found it works. There was a strategic plan approved by the Board of Supervisors. That was in November of last year. And we are almost a hundred percent of the year one, tier one recommendations and most of the tier two done. So we're on track to be within that five-year strategic plan. That, that is ongoing. Many of the changes that we've made came from the strategic plan. And so we, we certainly believe it works. We're going to continue working on that. The expansion of the spay-and-neuter services, no one's ever had enough spay-and-neuter services. We are going to continue to expand. We, we have increased it by about thirty percent. Last I checked since February, when we brought in a new veterinarian. This is increasing spay-and-neuter. We're not cutting corners, we're looking for efficiencies. This is high-quality care. If I needed an animal spayed and neutered, these are the veterinarians that I would want to do it. They will do fifty a day. They are really good at what they do. We've made some changes to the physical space to make it move faster. And we looked at our database because what were they spending time doing? So we haven't taken anything away from the patients. We're just focused on getting more of them done. And again, I, I spoke about adding clerical staff so we can be open seven days a week, Sundays and Mondays. People need services, we need to be there for them. We are hoping to have that, the, the staff is in training right now. It does take quite a bit of training to make them ready. We are hoping to be open seven days a week in twenty twenty-five. And that's all I have. So thank you for the opportunity to present.
Any questions or comments for the presenter? All right, seeing none, thank you so much for the update.
Thank you.
All right, item one point five is proclamation honoring the eightieth anniversary of the Iron House Sanitary District. Y'all meet me up front. Honoring the eightieth anniversary of the Iron House Sanitary District, whereas the Iron House Sanitary District was officially established in nineteen forty-five to provide vital water, wastewater collection and treatment services to the residents of what is now the city of Oakley and the surrounding area, including Bethel Island. And whereas for the past eighty years, ISD has been a cornerstone of public health and environmental stewardship in East Contra Costa County, ensuring clean water management, effective wastewater treatment and sustainable resource recovery. And whereas through decades of growth and innovation, ISD has continually evolved to meet the needs of a growing population, constructing and operating a modern water, water recycling facility, advancing the reuse of treated water and implementing infrastructure that supports the region's long-term sustainability. And whereas the Iron House Sanitary District has demonstrated strong governance, fiscal responsibility and an unwavering commitment to the communities it serves, including the city of Oakley, and has maintained high standards of transparency and community service. And whereas ISD has been a valued, valued and reliable partner to the city of Oakley, collaborating on key initiatives and contributing significantly to the quality of the life of Oakley residents. And whereas the Iron House Sanitary District dedicated staff, board members and leadership, past and present, are to be commended for their service, vision and stewardship over the past eight decades. Now therefore be resolved that I, Shannon Shaw, Mayor of the City of Oakley, on behalf of the Oakley City Council, do hereby recognize and celebrate the eightieth anniversary of the Iron House Sanitary District and extend a heartfelt gratitude and congratulations to the district for its outstanding service to the people of Oakley and East Contra Costa County.
Ms. Shaw, uh, guests, my name is Angela Larri and I'm very proud to be the Vice Chair of the Iron House Sanitary District Board of Directors. On behalf of our staff, our General Manager Jean-Marc Petit, my fellow board members, Dawn Morrow, who's here with us this evening, Chris Lawrenson, and also Pete Zirkel. I want to take the time to say thank you to the mayor, to the city council members, to city manager and to the staff for this proclamation. It really means a lot to us. For many people and organizations, when you turn eighty, it's a time to sit back and relax and kind of, you know, just take it a little bit more easy. But that's not the case at Iron House. As you've just very eloquently and beautifully said, all of the things that we're very proud to serve with wastewater resource recovery. We're an agency here as a special district that's very proud to be directly involved with the social, environmental and economic assets that we have here in the community. And we're very proud that we have a very dedicated staff and we've got a very dedicated capital improvement program because we are just moving ahead. We're here to partner with you with the city as we continue to grow because we do impact and we're very proud of the services, the public health services in particular. So as you can imagine, to turn eighty is a big deal. And we're going to actually have a, a welcome to the community to please come to our facility just here off Main Street on Walnut Meadows. And that will be on Saturday, October eighteenth, from eleven AM to two PM. Jamison, can you come and join us? Will you bring your family? We'd love to welcome you. And we welcome all the, all of our customers. We serve forty-eight thousand customers in both Oakley and Bethel Island. So again, thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for the work that your staff do to work with us. We're very proud to be here representing as a public agency, to be serving the good people of Oakley and Bethel Island. Thank you.
Yes, 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 we turn this thing off and we're going to get them, I'm up for a photo too next. Can I get the council to come join us, please?
Well, if the council is coming, I, may I ask the Iron House team who's here this evening to come and join us as well? Is that okay?
Come on.
Can you move all the chairs?
No. Yeah, I forgot to come this way.
This way?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
I got it. Just got to beat it. Proclamation for National Preparedness Month is whereas the city of Oakley is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents, visitors, visitors and businesses. And whereas the challenges posed by natural disasters, public health emergencies, technological disruptions and other unforeseen events highlighting the necessity of preparedness and proactive planning. And whereas a proactive approach to disaster preparedness can mitigate the impact of emergencies, reduce loss of life and protect property and infrastructure. And whereas individuals, families, communities and businesses play a crucial role in fostering a culture of preparedness and enhancing our collaborative ability to respond effectively to crisis. And whereas National Preparedness Month provides an opportunity each September to raise awareness and promote actions that enhance emergency and disaster preparedness across our nation. And whereas by taking steps to develop emergency plans, register for community warnings, assemble disaster supply kits and stay informed about potential hazards that may impact the community, we strengthen, we strengthen the resilience of our society and create a safer, more prepared city, state and nation for ourselves and future generations. Now therefore be resolved that I, Shannon Shaw, Mayor of the City of Oakley, along with the members of the Oakley City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September as National Preparedness Month and urge all citizens, communities, businesses, schools and gun and government agencies to join together in proactive efforts to prepare for emergencies and disasters. Assistant City Manager Danielle Navarro.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the council for making the health and safety of our community a priority and for reiterating the importance of emergency planning and preparedness. One of my responsibilities here is for the city's emergency management program. And staff is actively updating the emergency management plan, the emergency operations plan, excuse me. And we've restarted our staff training program. But a critical component of community preparedness is the community, the public. And so we'd like to remind everyone to visit the city's website at www.oakleyca.gov forward slash emergency management program to view our emergency preparedness information in English con traducciones en español. Preparedness starts at home is a twenty twenty-five theme for National Preparedness Month. And we invite everyone to follow the city's emergency preparedness campaign all month long on Facebook and Instagram at City of Oakley for tips, templates, plans, resources, and emergency alert signup information. Thank you.
All right. Item two, public comments. At this time, public comments will be heard for items not on the agenda. I do not have any speaker cards submitted. I did receive one online comment, but they indicated they did not wish to speak. If you'd like to submit a public comment, please complete a blue speaker card located in the lobby and submit it to the city clerk. The time limit to speak is three minutes. The time limit is monitored by the timer located in front of the mayor's seat. When one minute remains on the timer, it will beep once as a reminder to complete comments before your time expires. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or other outbursts so that everyone may have an opportunity to be heard. Note that due to provisions of state law, the council may not engage in dialogue regarding comments. Staff may be directed to respond to persons making public comments. Seeing no one running up here to make a public comment, I'll go ahead and close that item and move on to council member comments. Please remember, council members have three minutes to speak, which will be regulated by the timer. Are there any council members that have any comments? Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, I want to thank staff for a quick return the next morning. My questions about the investments that are going on with the city. Accordingly, investments, I asked many questions basically because our country is in a volatile economic situation. We're obviously contracting. Our economy is contracting, and we don't know quite where it's going. We don't have a clear direction, but we're not alone. France's government has collapsed. Nicole has sent their prime minister in exile of their ex-former prime minister. And just as I was booting up my computer, there was a big banner that Polish and NATO Air Force planes have scrambled to be over Poland because there are drones, Russian drones now over Poland, and they aren't very appreciative of that. I'm saying that because as we go through, um, our investments, from what was said, rely very heavily on the safety of government bonds. The situation is that I'm reading it is for several days, I've read some very candid comments that our government, US government bonds are not as stable as they once were. And that's basically, I don't want to go into the long description, but our country's debt is growing faster than a gross domestic product. In other words, we are using our draft protection to pay our bills, and we can only go on so far. So the, there's a threat to the US bonds. And with that comes a threat to the private bonds who are relying on the US to have some stability. So I'm asking our staff to pay particular attention to what may be happening on this. And I don't, and I think in the volatility, there'll be some, the potential for many quick changes.
Councilmember Meadows?
I'd like to address a next door post that was posted by Councilmember Fuller on August twenty-eighth. The post addresses rezoning that's taking place in Oakley. In the post, it insinuates that staff and council members are trying to do something underhanded. Either a council member Fuller should know this, or it's a shame he doesn't. But this is dictated by the state of California, not by the city of Oakley. We're doing, we're following law. If we don't follow this and do what's required by the state, we'll get forced with potentially builder's remedy. And we don't want that. In the post, he tries to accuse the other four of us voting together. I think the other four of us are responsible. Doesn't mean we want to vote for it, but we have to. It's easy to hide behind the other four council members. He accuses me of publicly stating that residents of Oakley do not know what they are doing. And he is the ultimate authority on what is best for the city. So if I publicly said that, bring the receipts because you don't have them. I would suggest focusing on positives instead of negatives. Four of us have worked for multiple years to move the city forward. And one council member continually costs staff time and resources. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no others, I will close council comments, and we are going to move on to the consent calendar. I do not have any speaker cards for the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to pull for discussion?
For part one.
I would move the remainder.
All right. I have a motion and a second for, to approve the consent calendar minus four point one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four point one, Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, I, again, I, with Kim, Ms. Snodgrass does a splendid job on the minutes, but there are those on the dais and in our city staff that want them contracted so that we really don't get a big, a good comment on what is going on and being said here. So I think we could change that, but in the interim, I won't approve these.
Move approval.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve item four point one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes four one. We are going to move on to item five point one, which is adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule to add carry concealed weapons permits. Logan Cartwright, Administrative Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm the Administrative Lieutenant Logan Cartwright. I am here to request to add an additional fee to the city of Oakley's master fee schedule. A history of the CCW process for the county and then also in Oakley. There's always been in place a kind of a, an agreement between the county sheriff and chiefs of police that the county sheriff would issue the CCW permits throughout the county. In June of twenty twenty-two, U.S. Supreme Court decision was brought forth between the New York Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin. That case basically changed the way in which permits were issued. Originally, it was basically a prove to me why you needed it. Now it was, no, you have to prove why I can't have one. Because of this decision, multiple sheriff's agencies throughout the nation had to change basically their philosophy of, in which way permits were approved and applied for. Because of this, most agencies now, sheriff's agencies are inundated with the CCW process, which in turn has forced the sheriff's office to be inundated and need to push that process on to local agencies and chiefs jurisdictions. In April of twenty twenty-five, Chief Beard was notified of the deviation by the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office, and we were given some time to set up our own CCW process. In a research, we determined it'll take approximately four to six hours of police department staff time to process and handle, oversee the application process, which also includes interviews, background checks, character checks, live scan processing, interacting with the applicant, third-party training providers, and are also our CCW processing. With this, staff time is considered to be approximately about a hundred dollars an hour. We're expecting it to be four to six hours, as I stated. We are requesting for the CCW permit fee schedule to be amended to five hundred dollars, which is comparable to most other cities in our neighboring agency, neighboring area. Sorry about that. Half of this fee is due upfront. The other half is due upon issuance of the permit. This proposal does fit within our strategic plan and under the finance and fiscal responsibility leveraged city's financial resources for the long-term benefit of our residents and the businesses. Due to the structure of this proposal and physical impact to the city, it is not expected to be significant. And it's also the recommendation of the staff for the council to adopt this resolution. And with that, if you have any questions, I am here.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, I'm, the fifty-fifty arrangement, I'm, I'm assuming that's they pay fifty dollar, or the two hundred fifty dollars initially for the investigation?
Yes, sir.
If the investigation turns out they will be not getting the permit, then we stop it. And we don't have to worry about the next two hundred fifty.
Absolutely. We will basically tell them, hey, you've paid upfront. We're kind of at that point of most likely, because of this, this, and this, you won't get it. They can choose to continue with the process, which there will be fee, but we will let them know. Yes, you're going to be able to move forward or no, you are not.
Just an editorial comment. I appreciate what everyone is doing in terms of CCW permits. The world is changing rapidly. Lot of work.
Any additional questions? All right. I am going to open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards submitted and not indicating anyone coming up to address the council on this. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation.
I move approval.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution amending the master fee schedule to add carry concealed weapons permits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Uh, we are going to move to item six, which is regular calendar. Six point one is appeal of the city manager's decision regarding property located on Oakley Road known as APN zero five two dash zero five one dash zero one five. Kim Snodgrass, City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. The full history of this case is in your staff report, but I'll provide a brief summary of events leading up to this hearing. And the case involves a longstanding code violation for tall, dry weeds on the property. Staff first identified the issue on July first of twenty twenty-four and issued a notice of violation the following day. Over the next several months, staff worked with the appellant to gain compliance. And despite staff providing extensions and contractor referrals, the work was never fully completed. After repeated attempts to resolve the issue, the city began issuing citations in November of twenty twenty-four and continued to do so in January of twenty twenty-five. In February, a five hundred dollar payment was received, but the violation remained, and that led the city to record a notice of violation against the property. The appellant requested a hearing to appeal this decision. And on June tenth, a hearing was held with the city manager, who granted an extension until June twenty-fourth. However, on July first, a reinspection confirmed that the property still was not in compliance. And the city manager upheld this decision to record the violation. On July twenty-first, staff received a request to appeal the city manager's decision, which is the appeal that's before you tonight. And a reinspection on July twenty-eighth confirmed the violations remained unresolved. Additionally, because the appellant believed the Water District was responsible, code enforcement staff contacted the Contra Costa Water District and confirmed they were not responsible for the parcel, and their easement documents do not indicate otherwise. The appellant lives out of the area and is not present tonight, but I did provide each of you a, a copy of his argument, which is labeled item six point one. It should be in front of you there. And staff recommends the city council review the case and either confirm or deny the city manager's decision to record the notice of violation against the property. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions from council to staff?
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, we, we have a written appeal in front of, at least in front of me. I think everyone has a written appeal from the appellate, who is not here tonight. But I'm, I'm wondering if Mr. Cole has looked at that and can give us a summary of basically what it says? And does it have any veracity or impact or not? We start talking about easements and others, I prefer.
Well, I mean, I, you are the fact-finding body, not me. I, in saying that, I'm comfortable with the position staff is taking. So I don't, I don't want you to make a decision because I'm telling you, you know, this is the decision you should make. But I can tell you I've reviewed this, and I'm comfortable with staff's position.
Well, as the fact-finder, maybe you can explain what he's trying to, what the appellate is talking. That CCWD didn't, came out and dis the, um, dis the easement, which seems when I read the original violation, it seemed to center on that. I, I have to admit that, at least from my perspective. So I'm looking at this, and he says that that is CCW property, and they are responsible. And I, the report that I have from the city is different. So as a fact-finder, I'm asking for clarification. Who had the responsibility for disking that based upon your legal expertise? So I, as a fact-finder, can understand and interpret the facts with a little bit more depth.
I believe the property owners did. I don't believe they were on CCWD property.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I believe the property owners have that responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
This letter, he also says that the property was classified by the county potentially as heavy industrial district. That's not one of ours.
It's, it's not. The, the appellant's confused. He thought that the property in the right of way was governed by the county, which it is not. It's, it's under our control and jurisdiction. Just for the council's benefit, the property is designated in the general plan as rural residential, and it is zoned R forty.
Okay, perfect. I mean, even if we had a industrial district, I mean, we don't exempt our commercial properties from weed abatement, correct? So.
No, and, and, you know, I gave the appellant time. He tried to explain what he has written that is in front of you tonight to me. It didn't make a lot of sense, but I, I wanted to give him the benefit of the doubt. And he did not produce any records that would allow me to overturn the decision and not record the notice.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Do I have any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, we will bring it back to council for any further discussion or a motion.
I move that we uphold city manager's decision.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to seven point one, city manager report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the-
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I got a few items to report for you all this evening. Number one, we have a movie on Main Street coming up this Saturday, September 13th. We'll be playing Remember the Titans, and that movie starts just as the sun goes down. Heart of Oakley, our second big festival of the year, will be this coming September 20th, also a Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also wanted to notify the public that the planning commission applications for the three vacant seats, that period, application period closes on September 11th at 5:00 p.m. And also, we've had public comments over the last, I'd say, year plus about some poaching that has been going on in Mars Creek. Director Strelow has worked with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they have sent us a variety of signs for us to post. This is a more of a flexible one, but they have hard ones, and we'll be working with our Public Works team to install those signs along the creek, and it gives contact information if people do see poaching. It's a 24-hour tip line. Second to last, I would like to acknowledge Billy Lee Sangshalern, our engineering manager. She is here, and she received an award from the American Public Works Association, the Northern California chapter. She was nominated and deemed to be the professional manager of the year award, so just wanted to highlight her for her amazing, amazing work she does for the city, and just, we have just such a talented team here. And lastly, last Friday, 24 brave men and women of the staff here participated in an inaugural kickball game, and I, along with Chief Beard, happened to be the captains of those teams, and I can tell you Team Gnarly Oaks, which I was a captain of, defeated Team Dark Oak, which the chief was a captain of, nine to seven in a six-inning kickball game, and the trophy is in my office right now for those that want to see it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to 7.2, which is reports from city council for committees, commissions, and boards that they may serve on and other activities that they've participated in. Do I have Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, I was able to attend a very nice gathering on hot August nights in the middle of the day at the recreation center on August 27th with the Studio 55. Mr. McMurray demonstrated his management capabilities by cooking over 100 hamburgers for us. I hope he keeps his day job. The, was a great event. It was boomer trivial, trivia. With it came, I still swear that the Mustang was, first Mustang was one 1966, they say 1964, the, but it went back to nostalgia, went back to the era of fond memories with the muscle cars in the middle 70s. Many people don't, never had the enjoyment of driving those. Bingo was fun, actually, one won, and then I didn't stay for American Graffiti, so I want to say it was good, well-attended. Many people just walked up to me and stopped me and said, hey, we're really happy that this is happening, that this is going on, that this is very wonderful, that it's going on. Thought of Councilmember Shaw or Mayor Shaw. I, there were a number of caregivers there, and the one thing that I'm, I'm a little bit leery about is we've cut off the age of 55, but 50 caregivers can be there. I think we have to come up with the definition of a caregiver, vet our caregivers, make sure that they're caregivers. We don't want somebody, say, 20 years old, hooking up with somebody down 55 over there and say, hey, I'm going to be your caregiver today, and start roaming around there. We really have a reason for picking at 55, and I think it's good that we've done that, and it should continue along there. I did detect an undercurrent, that there are people in Studio 55 that aren't as happy as they would like to be, and they would like to make it happier in another way if they could, and I think it's going to take some grit and integrity and commitments to the purpose of Studio 55 to facilitate its ongoing, which is very strong.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Since our last meeting, I attended East County Habitat Conservatory, Ironhouse Sanitation District's Board of Directors meeting. I also was at the hot August nights at the rec center and Friday Night Bytes. Thank you.
Councilmember Meadows?
Most of my meetings in August were canceled. I did attend the Delta Association of Realtors elected officials reception, and then I attended a ad hoc committee for MC.
Councilmember Williams?
I attended the California Civil Leadership Institute, where we talked about local governance, nonpartisanship, and the upcoming changes with redistricting for federal seats in California. Also had a follow-up to that with our Senator Cabaldin. At that time, it was the proposed congressional map. I think it's since been approved. Also had Tri Delta Transit. There is an audit that's going to be taking place over the next six to eight months due to Senator Wahab requesting that. So there's 15 activities that the auditors will review, which includes ridership policies, procedures, board documents, et cetera. The summer youth bus pass, which was a free bus pass, it had over 20,000 uses in East Contra Costa County. We had an update about SB 63. If this measure is passed, Tri Delta, County Connection, and West Cat will split up $15.75 million, which is good, because before, there was no return-to-source funding in that. We can thank our Assemblywoman Lori Wilson for advocating for local transit. For people who aren't aware, before Tri Delta was around, we had to rely on AC Transit, and our folks weren't getting transit options out here. There's also going to be provisions regarding financial accountability and efficiency and approving transit ridership through customer experience, or that money will go to the operators who can provide that. The bill is likely going to be a half-cent sales tax for 14 years and would be on the 2026 ballot. Also went to the mayor's conference, we had a presentation from Bike East Bay regarding bike education in the East Bay. They're the group that started the Bike to Wherever Day. I think it used to start as Bike to Work, but now it's Everything. Bike education can be a great way to achieve climate action goals. They do do over 100 bike education classes per year, including a class that we had here several weeks ago in Oakley, and since 2011, there's been over 28,000 participants. 13% of classes are in Contra Costa County, and besides our amazing Heart of Oakley Festival on September 20th, there's also going to be a coastal cleanup day at Big Break on September 20th. Also, the first Mustang was 1964 and a half technically, because I owned one.
All right, since our last meeting, the day after our council meeting, I had a meeting with Lori Wilson at Tri Delta Transit to tour the facility and have her meet with some of our transit operators and discuss the bill that is coming out to protect transit workers. Then, a few hours later, I had a meeting with Lori Wilson, and we toured the Oaks, met with management, and she got to address some of the issues that were presented her during her AD 11 day. And then at 5 o'clock, I had a meeting with Lori Wilson in her office regarding the redistricting. So we had a roundtable with mayors from her, from her district, and just at the time, like Councilmember Williams said, it was just the proposed plan, it was not passed, and then I did leave there and make it to the chamber mixer. I then had a Zoom also with Senator Cabaldin's office regarding the redistricting, and I just do want the residents of Oakley to know, and I'm not trying to convince anyone to pass, not pass it, or whatever, but if passed as proposed, Oakley will be split for two congressional representatives. So half of Oakley would have DeSagne, and the other half would have Congressman Harder, and I just want to make sure all the residents have all that proper information. On the 17th, I did attend the Oakley Youth Bike Rodeo with Bike East Bay at Creekside Park. On the 21st was the D-Bat ribbon cutting, and then the Delta Association of Realtors elected reception later that evening. On the 22nd, I had a Zoom with Lori Wilson's office. I have been tasked with being a part of a committee to put together a transportation town hall. It's going to be coming to Oakley on December 9th, nine to 12. Hopefully, we will be able to secure the rec center. This is going to be a listening session for the assembly member to hear, surround, transportation surrounding seniors and disabled for accessibility and any issues that they may face. So she wants to put together one town hall in Contra Costa and then one in Solano. Then, the 23rd, I had the honor of attending the 100th anniversary of St. Anthony's Church. They put on a beautiful reception at the rec center, and they asked if I would come address the members there. The 27th, Councilmember Williams already mentioned the Tri Delta Transit meeting, and then I went on the Sunset Stroll Brownstone Garden Tour after that. The 28th was the East Bay Block Party in Antioch. The county puts together these block parties throughout the county, where all county services are kind of a one-stop shop, and you can go there, and it was a huge turnout, and this year, it was in Antioch. And then I went to the last concert at Skip Alini's that night. A couple more transportation meetings with Lori Wilson's office, and then on the 3rd, the Justice for Seniors, Contra Costa Senior Legal Services fundraiser for trying to fund a full-time attorney for the seniors. The Contra Costa Mayor's Conference in El Cerrito, where East Bay Bikes did present, and at that meeting, I was reappointed to the EBRICS board till 2028. And then Friday, we had our EBRICS meeting. I know the chief has already been made aware, the encryption that was supposed to go in place kind of had a bit of a halt in their first day. They got through about three agencies and realized it wasn't going to be able to be successful, so they've rolled back to the old ways, and there is no date in sight as of yet. But they are going to keep us updated. I then went to Friday Night Bytes, and I think that's it. Yeah, all right, sorry. And so that will conclude the council member reports. We will move on to 7.2B, future agenda item requests. Do I have any? I have one. I would like to bring back before the council, the conversation about our mayoral rotation. I think that it was great in concept when we did it, and I think it just got a little more complicated than it needed, and the way it stands right now, District Four, technically, the way it's written, is to be mayor in 2026, and obviously, I am now. So I would like to bring it back to see what we can do and maybe have a discussion with the council.
Second.
Could you explain that a little bit further?
Just a conversation to have a, a chance to have a conversation around how we do our mayoral rotation.
We're going to do that again.
We're going to have a conversation about it, yes.
I think we ought to bring back the other ones from Mr., what Councilmember Meadows says, I'm not going to be a part of it. I'm not going to talk to anybody, so bring it back all you want, but we know why you're bringing it back, and if you are, you need to bring back the old one.
Councilmember Fuller, we can, we can have the conversation when we bring it back, and you can state your, your.
I'm sorry, what conversation?
We are going to have a conversation about redistricting, and you can make your statements when, when it's agendized.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding you.
We are going to bring it back as a work session, and if you have comments that you would like to make about that, you can do it when it's on the agenda.
I'm making the comment now to bring it back.
No, we'll stop, stop, stop. Mayor, two council members have expressed interest. Staff will bring the matter back. We should move on.
Thank you. We have, it's been seconded. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 8.1, which is providing direction to staff regarding the scheduling of city council reorganization meeting. Daniel Navarro, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Henderson and councilmembers. Each year in December, the city council reorganizes at a special meeting held directly before the December, regular council meeting. And last year in December, on December 10th, Councilmember Williams asked that staff return with an item to consider moving the annual city council meeting to a special meeting to, on a different day than the regular meeting. So staff reviewed the reorganization process in the other cities within Contra Costa County and determined that 16 cities do select their mayor and vice mayor, or in the cities that directly elected mayors, only their vice mayor, at a regular meeting in December, and most commonly near or at the end of that regular meeting. Richmond and Martinez reorganized at a special meeting on a separate night than their regular meeting. So tonight, staff is just seeking direction from the city council on three options for the reorganization of the city council, and all options do meet the timing for the certification of the municipal election results in even years. So the first option is to continue to hold the special meeting at 5:30 the same night as the regular December meeting with a short reception between the meetings, and staff would ask that the city council consider the time to change the council member nameplates and request to speak system and reseat the reorganized council, should we continue that. Option two is to hold a special meeting on the Monday before the regular December meeting with a reception immediately after, and staff would ask that the council consider what time to schedule the regular meeting, I'm sorry, the special meeting. And option three is to schedule the reorganization at the end of the regular December meeting with a reception immediately after, and for that one, staff would ask that the council consider providing direction to staff to limit the agenda to time-sensitive items. And with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
All right, do I have any questions from council for staff? All right, seeing none, do I have any public comment?
I'm sorry, what did you?
Any questions?
Yes, there are two that do not have it on a different night. Majority, overwhelming majority have it at the end of the night in terms of reorganization. Am I correct in reading that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, do I have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for some conversation and direction. Councilmember Meadows?
My preference would be option three.
Councilmember Fuller?
My preference is, we've moved into a situation where it's working, so it's, it's not broke, it's working, so let's fix it. And to me, if you are going to fix it, just move the whole thing to the end. We don't have, we're the same people that are saying a different special meeting during December or saying the same one, well, we haven't got time during the summer to have to constrite. So I'm just for keeping it the way it is, but we have a reorganization meeting at the end of the, meeting at December, and not make, that would be the only change.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I think option three is the better way to do it, and it sounds like that's kind of what the status quo is, so I think option three is the best way to do it, and then that would not require any hustle to like change nameplates and stuff, you could just do it by the next meeting.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's my preference then, option three.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
I'm comfortable with option three.
Yeah, I agree. I think option three is the way to go. We would still be doing it during the same day. We tend to have the special meeting and kind of get delayed start on our regular meeting. I also think that it would give the incoming mayor a chance to start the new year nice and fresh. I've, it's, you get thrown into doing a meeting, you know, you get sworn in as mayor, and then boom, you're, you're running a meeting, and so I think it would give them an opportunity to kind of have it all sink in, be able to have the celebrations that we still do, and you know, the pomp and circumstance that we all enjoy, the recognition, and then the new mayor would be able to start the new year. So I think option three is better as well. All right, and that's.
Could you clarify option three?
Option three is, schedule the reorganization meeting at the end of the regular December meeting on the second Tuesday with this reception immediately following.
Okay, so I, so at the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting on the same day.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and that's enough direction, no vote, right? Or wait, was it a vote? Sorry. Oh, just a work session, okay. All right, so closed sessions, we have none, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 23rd at 6:30 p.m. See you all there.